All right. Thank you for all coming tonight. The regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It is Thursday, January 11th, 6:00 PM. As we start every regular meeting, we're going to have a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Morris.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Oller.
President.
Councilman Azar.
President.
Councilwoman Crossen.
President.
Councilman DeBon.
Here.
Councilman Elliott.
Here.
Councilman Garrison.
Here.
Councilman Morris.
Here.
Councilman Nasser.
Present.
Councilman Nation. Either present, one is absent.
Thank you, Michelle. At the beginning of our regular meetings, we set aside 30 minutes for members of the public to speak on items not on the agenda. Please, if you do have something you would like to say, try and limit your -- please limit it to about three minutes if you could. So at this time, if anyone has anything they would like to address with us, please come up to the podium. And please keep the promise of three minutes if you would. Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Donald Wayne Hyde. I live at 1411 Poplar Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. Today, I'm going to continue my challenge of you to be leaders, but this time, I'm going to give you a task. I'm sorry that one member of the city council isn't here. I wish they were all here with the mayor. That would be all 10 leaders of our city. We know that there are three main problems coming up that we have to solve, and we have to do it in a reasonable amount of time. Now, the city council, as far as I'm concerned and as far as I get from the newspapers, believe that they're not involved in these three main problems, but I suggest you are involved because anything that has to do with the city and county, they're linked, like our fingers are linked. They can come apart, but a lot of things are together, and this is one such thing. You guys have appointed places and committees to study these problems. The problem is, you're not doing it right. I am challenging this city council, who owns property and has the park -- city parks department at their disposal, all to get together, and you, beyond the committee, you organize it, you show your leadership. I want a one-room schoolhouse built on city property that belongs to the people, but I don't want it paid for with city tax dollars. I want you to raise funds, and more important than that, and I mean this sincerely, more important than that, I want you to raise the workers that actually build the thing. In other words, get a lot of volunteers. I'm not talking 10, 20, or 30. No, I'm talking hundreds of volunteers. Assemble a one-room schoolhouse out of wood, as it would have appeared in 1876. Now, you may ask why I'm asking that of you. I'll tell you why. This ruler starts with one. Every one of your plans do not start at one. In order to have a discussion on the jail, on the current ways to build a building that lasts longer than 20 years, all the schools that we're going to be building in the next 10, 15 years, and all the money we're going to spend on that, all of that needs to start at one. And you may ask, well, what do you mean by one? You have to educate the public on what it is, where we've come from, and in order to do that, you've got to show them living history. We've spent so much time nowadays on getting pictures, or getting a video out, and creating a fake image. We're good at that nowadays, but what we need is something that they can touch, they can sell it. Plus, you need to be able to sell them, or you can't sell them on something they don't understand. You build a one-room schoolhouse, and you show it to every single citizen, especially the young, because that's the main people you've got to sell on this school project. And to tell you the truth, that's the main people you've got to sell in the jail. You want them to understand that we're a community, and the reason I suggest that we get a lot of people -- let me finish. I'm almost done. The reason I suggest we get a lot of people volunteering to do this is because we've got to start pulling this community back together again with certain goals. And I don't want this to be something that's things you should do, nor should you, but you need to be able to use this to educate the people on what they need. And I'll come back next month and give you a part two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Would anybody else like to speak on any items not on the agenda tonight? Name an address for the record, please.
Before I just started, Councilman DeBon, I know you suggested three minutes, but if you could please give me five, I'd highly appreciate it.
I'll give you five.
Thank you very much. Mayor Bennett, Council President DeBon, and members of the council. My name is Dewayne Malone, the pastor of the First Free Will Baptist Church here in Terre Haute, Indiana. My address is 2390 Seventh Avenue. Here with me tonight are members of the church and members of Citizens of Action. I come to you tonight in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. As we approach the honoring of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., I seek a call for a moral revival in the city of Terre Haute in Vigo County in 2018. As we reflect on the life and dream of Dr. King, I would like to remind many of us of his last dream, the Poor People's Campaign. The Poor People's Campaign was another march on Washington, DC, led by Dr. King in 1968. These efforts were to gain economic justice for the poor people in America. Dr. King and others shifted their focus on these issues after observing their gains in civil rights had not improved the economic conditions of African-Americans in the United States. The campaign advocated economic and human rights for poor Americans of diverse backgrounds. They presented an organized set of demands to Congress and executive agencies, setting up protest camps on the Washington Mall, where they stayed for six weeks in the spring of 1968. While many other cultures have gained economic freedoms in the U.S. and our city, African-Americans lag greatly behind. Without excuses, I believe there are many deep-rooted issues of racial and economic disparities that must be addressed by and for African-Americans, from slavery to today's status quo mindset of institutionalized racism. These conversations may not be comfortable to have, and in many cases, even deny that they exist, but the issues of racism are alive and well today and must be addressed, holding one another accountable with love, not pointing fingers of blame, but to adjust them with love for solutions. That's why I'm here tonight, under the influence of God's Holy Spirit, to request our city's legislative and administrative bodies to provide representation to public forums on the plight and conditions of the African-American community in Terre Haute, Indiana, and Vigo County. We also seek to include representation from city redevelopment and the Human Rights Relations Commission. We will also seek representation from county legislative bodies. These public forums will be held every second Monday of the month, starting February 12th, 2018, at the Vigo County Public Library at 6:00 PM. Since the African-American community has no representation to bring about these changes needed, these forums will allow us to show publicly the visions, plans, and solutions we've been sharing with public officials the past 15 years privately with no progress. Although we appreciate the open-door ability to share and communicate these issues, which has led to the expanding, the recognition of our Downtown Heritage Awards winners, this year -- this year's recipients received Coach Pete Jones, Ellis Mills, which is Big Shoes, and Pastor Dr. Cletus Malone. But economically, much more must be done. Too often, those responses only equal delay or wait, which according to Dr. King is just another way to deny our economic freedoms in developing the 13th Street corridor, creating jobs instead of jail cells, and the return of the Charles T. Hyde Community Center. We believe it's past time we hold one another accountable with love that all men were granted the undeniable right of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness according to the promissory note of the Declaration of Independence. Unfortunately, many African-Americans who follow this quest of this note for economic freedoms are left battered by the storms of discrimination and staggered by the winds of retaliatory persecution. But regardless of the trials, we look forward to working with our legislative branches to improve the quality of life for all in Terre Haute and Vigo County. President DeBon, we seek appointments from this council in both commissions, those with a heart of compassion and a willingness to support the vision and solutions needed to bring about these changes in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there is no one else, corrections to the journal, Michelle?
There are none.
Communications?
They're in your packets.
Reports from governmental agencies?
I believe, Mr. President, you were going to do appointments to boards and commissions. Tonight, would you like me to read them?
Yes, please.
And just a reminder, we will need a motion and a second and a vote to approve all of these.
Can we do it all in one vote?
Appoint Councilwoman Martha Crossen to 911 Advisory Board. Appoint Councilman Karam Nasser to Area Planning Commission. Appoint Stephen Chinawith and Chris Darner to the IT Advisory Board. Appoint Brian Conley to Redevelopment. Appoint Councilwoman Earl Elliott to Transportation Policy Committee. Appoint Councilman Curtis DeBon to Downtown Terre Haute Advisory Board. Appoint Councilman Neil Garrison to Riverside. There is one appointment you're still confirming, and that's on redevelopment.
Thank you, Michelle.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Crossen?
If there's no further discussion, I would move the approval of these appointments.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Crossen and seconded by Councilman Nasser that we approve these appointments. Holes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Passes.
Mr. President, I believe in front of all the council, there is a list of the council committees that you have created. I thought I handed one out. It would be the Finance, Planning, and Governmental Affairs. Did everyone receive a copy?
Yes.
There's no motion necessary for this. There will be a copy placed on the website beginning of next week.
Okay. Thank you. I see on her special meeting scheduled --
Yes, there is a special meeting scheduled for January 18th, 2018, at 5:15 PM. Currently, it has three items on the agenda. Special Order 60, 2017, Resolution 35, 2017, and in front of you is a copy of Resolution 1, 2018, which is approving the Wi-Fi service for the year for the council. Those notices will be sent out either tomorrow or next Tuesday for the meeting on the 18th at 5:15.
Thank you, Michelle. Old business?
Resolution 35, 2017, designating an area commonly identified as 300 North Fruit Ridge, Terre Haute, Indiana, is an economic revitalization area for the purpose of a 10-year personal property tax abatement, Dev Corp. LLC. For confirmation, this needs to be tabled because of average -- we have.
Move to table.
Second. All right, it's been moved to table by Councilman Azar and seconded by Councilman Garrison. Holes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Table.
General Ordinance 11, 2017, amending City Code, Chapter 6, Article 2, Police Department, Section 6-15, Police Merit Plan.
Petitioner?
President DeBon, Members of Council, John Plasty, Chief of Police. Sean spoke about this last week. I'm here to answer any questions you may have about it tonight.
Is there anyone from the public who has -- who would like to speak on General Ordinance 11, 2017? Counsel?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Oller?
There's no further questions. I may we approve General Ordinance 11, 2017.
Second. It's been moved by Councilwoman Oller and seconded by Councilwoman Crossen that we approve General Ordinance 11, 2017. Holes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Next item, please.
Special Order 60, 2017, vacating a portion of a north-south public alley located south of 100 Kit Avenue. Again, this will need to be tabled until the January 18th meeting.
Move to table.
Second. It's been moved to table by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilwoman Oller. Holes in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's tabled. Next item, please.
Special Order 61, 2017, reserving a property located at 100 through 106 Kit Avenue and a portion of vacated alley located south of 100 Kit Avenue. Favorable recommendation from area planning with conditions.
Petitioner?
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of council. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm with the law firm Wright Shagley &amp; Lyer. I'm here tonight representing petitioner Matthew Trimbley. As we discussed last week, Mr. Trimbley is -- has three lots on Kent Avenue. This is part of a bigger project that's going to not only the vacate alley, if that's vacated next week, but also the portion facing Walbash, that'll be turned into a convenient mark. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on Special Order 61, 2017? Counsel?
Mr. President?
Councilman Morris?
No further questions. I propose we move on Special Order 61, in favor.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Morris and seconded by Councilwoman Oller that we approve Special Order 61, 2017. Holes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Special Order 63, 2017, authorizing a tax anticipation warrant loan.
Petitioner?
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Duke Bennett. I am here to seek your support tonight. Again, we went through this last week, and I just wanted to hit on a couple of quick highlights. I handed out a new two-page spreadsheet that's marked A1 and B1, so we'll follow the A and B from last week, so you can file those two from last week away and use these as your current information points. On A1, I have highlighted in gray there, you'll see, what was changed. So we added December, per Councilman Elliott's request, our estimated ending balances for all those funds that are a part of this cash pool. In the other fund section, if you move down towards the bottom there, you'll see that that's highlighted. There was a request for some detail on that, and as I went through that, I found two funds that were not included on that. One was a positive, one was a negative, but it was enough to change that number. It lowered it a little bit, so I wanted to reflect that, being accurate. And then, of course, the total cash across the bottom was changed a little bit because of the changes in the other funds. So this first sheet is the operating cash pool with no tax anticipation warrant. And just as a reminder, the whole purpose of the tax anticipation warrant is to help us from a cash flow perspective throughout the year. The $4 million amount is what we need. We don't need more than that. We don't need less than our -- we can't deal with less than that, and so the $4 million number is what's built into the next sheet. So if you go across the bottom, as we did last week, you will see that, you know, March, April, and May, and then August, September, October, and November, but all have negative balances in this cash pool if we don't do the tax anticipation warrant. Second sheet, B1, highlighted the same things, but this shows you the updated numbers across the bottom of what happens when the $4 million tax anticipation warrant comes in, and that we maintain positive balances, you know, throughout the year from a cash flow perspective. The tax anticipation warrant, the process here is hoping for a favorable vote tonight, and then the process kind of starts again for us, because what has to happen next is we have to advertise this, and it has to go out on the market, and if anybody responds to that, which they may, they have in the past, we have to provide financial information to them so they can make a proposal to us. First Financial Bank has already gone through those steps because they've loaned us the last several years, and so that step is out of the way with them, but they will respond to this also. And we talked last week about what those rates are, and it was on your cover sheet that I gave you in the summary sheet. So an approval tonight kind of just starts a two-week-plus timeframe to go through the advertising, receipt of bids, and then response to the bids, and acceptance of a bid. We had not intended to close on this till sometime in February anyway. The bank has agreed, if First Financial Bank is the winning bidder, which is good news for us, they will hold our interest rate till the end of February, so we don't have to worry about potential interest rates. They believe they will probably go up in February, so we'll be able to hold our underprime rate that we've received from them, and maybe somebody else will come to the table with a better offer, but at least we'll know what that is locked in for a closing in February. Something is we don't pay any interest for first couple of months of the year, and then we will pay this off in its entirety in December upon receipt of our tax disbursement. So we need to have this. As I said last week, there's no surprises here. We've talked about this during the budgeting process, that we would need to do that. The big change, though, from a borrowing perspective is, we will be reducing our overall borrowing by $3 million this year when we get into June between the redevelopment loan and tax anticipation warrant. And so the pleasure of the council was to reduce our borrowing, the internal borrowing from redevelopment, and, you know, stay on the tax anticipation warrant side, which is our only other option. And so it's still clear to me that that's the will of the council, and so our role -- goal will be that in June, we pay back $3 million to the Department of Redevelopment, and then so we will have $6 million outstanding to the end of the year, at which point we would pay back the tax anticipation warrant. So I think that's enough. I mean, I don't want to be repetitive from last week. I think we answered most of the questions and be happy to entertain any questions you have tonight in order to help me get this approved, and we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on Special Order 63, 2017? Counsel? Councilman Azar?
Mayor, in the June on -- I'm sorry, hold on. On B1, is the $3 million paid back reflected in that?
In June, yes.
So that still leaves a $13 million?
Yes. I mean, we'll get about $10 million in property tax dollars in June. Between May and June, you know, we'll get an early disbursement.
Where is the $3 million?
Well, this is just cash flows. This is not showing expenses, and this is just what the cash -- if you look at the bottom number, that will be the cash balance of this pool at the end of that month. So at the end of June, we'll have about $14 million in this pool.
After paying the $3 million?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. How are you?
The mayor and I exchanged several emails, plus had a couple of telephone conversations about this, as I was off on this charge to, you know, reduce the interest all that I have, all that I could. At the suggestion of Councilman Garrison, I called Steve Witt and said, "Steve, what, you know, what's Department of Redevelopment's expectation and needs?" And he said they'd like to have the $3 million and go with these projects they have sitting. So that shortened things, but there's still some ways I thought we could reduce the interest, and I'm going to go through some of those now, so hopefully we can address them. If we can't address them this year, which doesn't look like we can, maybe we can next year in our TAW borrowing process. Concerning Councilman Azar's question, if you look at the general fund, and we begin the year at $1 million, I'm going to work from page A1.
Got you.
It's $1 million that we're starting the year with, and we end the year with a minus $353,000. That's a swing negative of $1,353,000. Included in that is the $3 million repayment to the Department of Redevelopment. So that means all the other general fund activity needs to generate a $1,650,000 surplus or so for that to happen, and I just shared those numbers, you know, with the mayor, and he's comfortable with that. So that answered that for -- to my satisfaction, that same concern. Now, if you look at the bottom line of this schedule, A1, the total cash line, it first becomes negative in March, so that tells me we don't need to borrow any money till we get to, you know, the start of March, and we don't need the full $4 million in March. And it seemed like we could use $2 million in March, and then $2 million in April, and then we went -- I went through a number of questions and emails with the mayor, "Well, why can't we repay that in June and then borrow it back again in a little bit in August and more in October, and then reduce our interest?" And basically, the response was, "Well, you know, it's just not that simple. The bank charges us fees. We'd be charged the fees twice if we got out and got back in, and then there's some risk of the interest rates going up," which I'm not quite as concerned about that. They don't want to go up a quarter of a point at a time, so if you're out for just a month, you're well ahead of any potential 25% increase. So then I looked at the latter part of the year, and we don't need $4 million to cover those deficits in October and November. There, you know, there's some coverage there, and I believe the mayor's comments were, "Well, when we get to that time of the year, that's when we start having some of our heavier disbursements for the things that we can control, and at that point in time, if something hasn't quite worked out to plan, money didn't come in when it was expected to come in, and more needs to go out," then, you know, he'd like to have a little bit more of a cushion available. Although, you know, once they get to that point in time, he did tell me they could prepay part of the balance in October if everything stays on plan. So to resolve that, you know, we just kind of need to know, I think, throughout the year if this plan is working, you know, if this projection is accurate, where we have significant improvement or shortfalls, so that we kind of know what to expect. Page two of the agreement, that's Section 1, it does allow us to issue more than one warrant, so, I mean, the $4 million can be broken down, Section 1 of the Order 63 on page 2. So it can be broken down, and the -- and even with, I would think, even with different due dates. So I think some of these other things may be possible if things were worded differently, but these documents do cost us money, even though they're fairly similar year after year. So I'll -- I'm going to make a, you know, make a list of, "Look, Keith, can we kind of tweak it this way next year to, you know, save some money?" And I just, you know, delay the borrowing until we really need it and accelerate repayment in the fall if we can to, you know, reduce the interest cost of this. So is that clear?
Would it behoove us to tailor it till next month and then let you figure?
Well, I don't see where anything really is going to change. We also talked about the 1782. I've thought about that a lot, is that, could that possibly change anything that it really -- I don't see how it could change. But it really, I don't see how it could change anything with this. It could change with Department of Redevelopment. So, you know, as long as we're perfectly honest with that, is that it could impact what happens there, then, and we won't know, you know.
But that would be in December. We wouldn't have to do anything until December to deal with that 1782 notice if that was a loan extension of increase.
But we should know well.
We know, but we wouldn't have to act on it.
Right, right.
Right.
But to act on it. So, you know, if we're just, you know, open with them about that, I'd feel better that we hope to go to $2 million, but we don't know for certain and can't, don't know what we need to know to fit into that.
How are you?
Councilman Azar? I'm sorry, I've already spoken once. Councilman Azar? Was, when you spoke with, you spoke with Steve Witt. When you spoke with him, was he comfortable with possibly reducing what we paid back to redevelopment? No? He wants the three, the full $3 million?
He'd like to have the $3 million. That's what a couple of you suggested last week.
And I'm good with that, and I proposed that.
And I thought, "Well, you know, might as well find out for sure what their opinion."
Well, I was just, you know, if you reduce it to two, you can reduce the TAW to three.
Yeah, I understand.
Have some justice.
But he says there's some opportunity cost to them. Them having their money and being able to do some things that, you know, could help them save or be more responsible or create opportunities, you know, for the city. You know, there's some cost to them by not having their money.
How are you?
Mr. President, if I could just elaborate on that a little bit. That was one of the conversations I had also, was that, you know, it's tempting for all of us looking on the finance side, it's free money, there's no interest, but the opportunity cost of projects that are foregone in order to do that is the risk. And we've kind of done that for the last couple of years, and I think everybody wants to get back to more projects, more infrastructure, et cetera.
Councilwoman Crossen?
Yeah, I also had a brief conversation with Mr. Witt, and same thing. In addition to which, some of the projects regard infrastructure, which is getting worse as it is not addressed and means that it costs more to fix in some cases. So, I think there are those, sometimes not as obvious costs, but costs are there. But I did have a question, and I think it could be for either Councilman Elliott or the mayor. But you've had this discussions about not borrowing at all at once. Is that your intention to borrow it only, or attempt to borrow it only as needed, or are you?
You talking about the TAW?
Yes.
No, we would, it would be a $4 million closing at the end of February that would be paid back in full in December, and if there's an opportunity to pay on that early, we'll do that somewhere along the way, and there may just be. So, it would be.
So, no attempt to borrow a lesser amount?
No, because, no, we just, and you know, the main need we have is in the first six months. And so, if we're going to pay back Department of Redevelopment, write them a check for $3 million in June, and we have to write a $4 million check to the bank in June, then all of a sudden, that $13 million goes down to very little, that we'll be borrowing immediately again. If we borrow this once and it just stays flat across the year, then it takes all those dips out. And we'll pay about $150,000 in interest, roughly, give or take, on this. And so, considering we've got almost a $90 million budget, it's a pretty small amount of money for a great safety net. It allows us to continue to operate like we need to and pay it back in full.
And I do understand about paying back, but still borrowing all in one month's sum.
Yes.
But I think you were proposing that perhaps that wasn't necessary to borrow it all at once.
You know, I'm much more used to working with commercial businesses who get a line of credit and they can borrow and repay each day, and they have a certain amount of credit. It just doesn't, it doesn't work in this, in the government environment. So, I'm trying to find something that's kind of somewhere in between, and we'll keep working on that, so.
And I did have one other question, it's not directly related to this, but I, you're here, so I want to ask it now. I hope I relayed it to you that. Was the payment of $150,000 made at the end of December to, that we had requested?
For the bank. Yeah, it's not been made yet because we had to give a 20-day notice to the county. Has the bank reviewed the documents? They wouldn't let us make the payment, so it's set up to be coming up here, the 20-somethingth of January. I don't know what the date exactly is, but it's already been set up. Didn't realize we had to give them a 20-day notice before we could make the payment.
Okay, thank you.
And then we'll, now, and can I follow up with that? You know, we'll be making a payment in June and December, but we will have to come back to the council to appropriate money into the wastewater budget from their cash reserves to make those two payments. So, we'll bring that to you probably in May.
There's no further questions. I move we adopt special ordinance 63, 2017.
Second.
It's been moved to pass special ordinance 61, I'm sorry, special ordinance 63, 2017 by Councilman Azar and seconded by Councilman Elliott. Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Aller?
Yes.
Councilman Azar?
Yes.
Councilwoman Crossen?
Yes.
Councilman Elliott?
Yes.
Councilman Garrison?
Yes.
Councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman Nasser?
No.
Councilman DeBon?
Yes.
That is seven yes, one no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Special ordinance 64, 2017, amending city council rules.
A positioner on that.
This is the simple amendment. Give me one second to grab my document, please. This is the simple amendment where the changes were made from councilman or councilwoman to councilperson, and I believe he, she was changed to the council member.
It was councilperson or member.
Yeah, that was it. And there was a change in the order of business. To clarify some of the titles, previously, we called it reports from select committees. In the council rules, we changed it to non-standing committees. Ordinances on second reading became items previously tabled. The order, currently, the order for council business is old business resolutions and new business. The change has been items previously tabled, which is what we currently do, and then tax abatements would be next for confirmation. So, they've already been adopted. And then it would go into items on second reading, and we did specify, because the rules never specified the order for old business, and the order would be appropriations, general ordinances, special ordinances, and resolutions. The council, there's another amendment that the council can change the order of the agenda by the president or with a motion and a second and a majority vote of the council. So, even though we've listed appropriations, general ordinances, special ordinances, and resolutions, you can change that order at any time. And then items on first reading, which is previously what we would call new business. And again, the same order, appropriations, general ordinances, special ordinances, and resolutions. Again, letter C states, "The order of the agenda may be moved at any time upon a motion, a second, and a majority vote of the members of the council or at any time upon motion of the president without further required action by the council as a whole." And that's, the majority of changes in this.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on special ordinance 64, 2017? Counsel? Councilwoman Aller?
Mr. President, there's no further questions. I move that we approve special ordinance 64, 2017, as presented.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Aller and seconded by Councilman Morris that we approve special ordinance 64, 2017. All of those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Passes. Next item, please.
Special ordinance 64, 2017, amending city council rules.
65. I'm sorry, 65.
A positioner on that.
Okay. The original ordinance was presented to you with multiple changes. The first change would be to change the sunshine meeting into another regular meeting. So, the council would still hold two meetings a month, the first and second Thursday of each month, but they would be both regular meetings and meaning that the council could take action at either meeting. This does not necessarily mean anything would be fast-tracked through the council, but the council would allow public comment on anything at the agenda. So, the public would have more opportunities to speak on items, instead of being told you have to wait until the following month to speak on something listed as new business. With this change, they could speak at any time. The next one is the filing would have to, filing requirements would have to be changed. So, previously, ordinances had to be filed the Friday immediately following the sunshine meeting. So, the change would be, the filing for ordinances would be the third Friday preceding the next regular meeting. This allows the clerk's office time to advertise everything. If the council wanted to take action at the first meeting and they voted to approve taking action, it would already be advertised. This does not mean the council would have, would be required to take action at the first meeting. The second change is changing in the filing deadlines of resolutions. Again, this is so that everything is posted, advertised, and ordered, that if the council wanted to take action at the first meeting, they would be allowed to. The next change is, there was a requirement in the council rules that it would be, everything would be sent to a committee. "The ordinance shall be referred to the proper committee by the president unless the common council shall vote to take up consideration of the ordinance in committee of the whole council." Instead, it's been changed, "The ordinance shall be referred to the proper committee by the president unless the common council shall vote to take up consideration of the ordinance during said meeting." So, again, this is if you want to take action during that. The next change is we found areas where it only referenced the word ordinance, not ordinance or a resolution, and that was a change made. There was a change in letter H where it says, "After the second reading, all ordinances shall be open for discussion." We removed that because all ordinances will be allowed to have discussion any time they're on the agenda. Letter I states, "All ordinances shall be open to amendment after the second reading, but not before." We've removed the phrase "but not before" because you could amend it at the first meeting. The big change is the next one. In the council rules, it stated that you could do a roll call vote by alphabetical order. A council member has requested to be considered doing a ballot voting. This is the original document submitted to you. It is not a secret ballot. Ballots would be handed out. Each council member would have to mark their vote on it, and it would be retained with their name on it. It would be read during the meeting. I'm going to stop there because I believe a council member has proposed amendment to this, and I want to see if he wants to discuss that.
Oh, sure. After I read this, I wanted to make sure that the council is still, has the ability to do a roll call vote on certain items. And my thoughts on this, that we don't want to, we don't want to burden the clerk's office with every time we want to vote to pass out of bounds, even though it might be a voice vote, like, that doesn't eliminate all those in favor. What I'm trying to propose is if a council member asks for a roll call vote, unless a majority of those present request a ballot instead, it will still remain a roll call vote, or a roll call vote. But we can, if a majority of the council present, not a majority of the council, but a majority of those present, ask for a ballot vote, then the ballot vote would overrule the voice roll call. And that way, we still have the ability to do a roll call or a ballot and not burden them with every time we turn around having to do a ballot vote. That was my thoughts on that. I do have one question on this. If you may, you want to ask for a public comment first?
Yeah, let's do that. Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on special ordinance 65, 2017? You could give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yolanda Barnhill, 1720 North 12th Street. I'm a little confused. If you have the ballot vote, will it still be read to the public?
Yes.
That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and it will be retained as well, and Michelle, will it be put online? Yes.
And it will be read that, that day, so you'll know the vote and how everybody voted.
Counsel?
One question I have. When we're talking about both of them being regular meetings, I didn't think about that until just now. If something is read the first time at either meeting, then, and voted on, then it would require a two-thirds vote each time?
It's by statute.
By, I understand that. So, what I'm saying is now, if everything that's read the very first time will require a two-thirds vote instead of a five, instead of a majority of five, is that correct?
Yes.
And it goes beyond that. By default, it will go to a second reading unless there's action taken to even consider the question on first reading.
Let me give you an example of that.
Okay, please.
There's a resolution transferring money from services contractual to office supplies for a department. The statutes state an ordinance, so there's some clarification still needed on whether a resolution would be because it only references ordinance. So, let's take it one step further. There is a street vacating for a street that's platted but not open. The first meeting, if no motion is made to take action at that meeting, it just rolls over to the next meeting.
It follows just the same procedure as a sunshine or a regular.
Right. But if action is, if a council member says, "I want to take action tonight," then we have to have unanimous consent of the, all the members present, and then if they get unanimous consent.
Takes a two-thirds vote.
It takes six, yes.
Okay. However, if it goes to the second meeting, second reading is still at a majority vote.
Five.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
How are you? Councilman Nasser?
And Michelle, if this passes or doesn't pass, but say it does pass, we will give an explanation online on how our meetings are going to proceed in the future, correct?
I've already started preparing some documents for the website, but they're not on there yet.
And then I did have a question regarding going from a rotation basis to the paper ballot. Would you need a second to do the paper ballot if someone calls that, or is it just?
You talked about that. If some, it's just a request made.
Okay, just like how we do now?
Yeah, I'd like to have a paper ballot. At that point in time, the president would say, "Okay, all those in favor of a paper ballot," and if the majority...
But I don't see that in here.
Yes, it's in here. I mean, it doesn't say you have to have a second.
It does, it does actually say that.
Starting a vote by ballot in the first place? That's, basically, that's my question.
The last line.
It's the very last line of here on page two.
The division of the assembly, which is considered the paper ballot, may be requested by any member of the town.
The last line of what?
I'm sorry, page three.
Last line of the R.
Section, what is it?
R.
R.
So, the fact that somebody has to make the request is the last line of the whole section?
Yeah.
Yeah. But it seems like it should start with, "Here's the process." If somebody wants a, wants a...
That's fine. Move it up, that's fine.
You know, there's the process.
I don't have problems.
Start with that. How you get there in terms of telling you how to do it, without telling you what the start point is.
So, you wanted to start with a division of the...
Yeah, start, start the thing with that.
And could we, roll call vote, that's the decision, by a division of the assembly? And could we, roll call vote, that's a decision by a division of the assembly, that's pretty complicated, a turn for me to remember.
Where at, which one?
Well, I presume you refer to, at the end of R, this division of the assembly may be requested by any member of council, must, in order to proceed with the ballot vote.
And it says it in Q also for the roll call vote. At the bottom of Q, maybe requested for the roll call vote. I think that's, isn't that just wording that we, that you have to...
Just to be clear, you have a regular, the original version, and there's an amendment?
I got the one I had all marked up last week, and then I got to do it today.
And you're correct, the new one...
The original is going to have these changes in it. So this is the first I've seen of what, Mr. A, the council, A, or C, are talking about.
Correct. And that was a request that we had today, is, it's just, and it's an amended proposal, so you would have, again, have to vote on the amendment itself. So that's completely separate from what you were given last week.
And I, and just if I may, and I have no problem if you're uncomfortable with it right at this point in time, if you want to table it, I don't have a problem.
All I'm saying is, how you knew it, that followed by how it gets started.
He just wanted to move the...
How it gets started, I'll be first.
He wants to move the last sentence first.
Last sentence first, yeah.
I just note that the roll call vote all has explained a division at the end, and the...
And he would like both of them at the beginning.
Both of them, both, Q and R start with the division of the assembly.
Yes, I agree.
Except for the last sentence.
And if, and I would just suggest, once this amendment's proposed, you can propose, or we can integrate that into the proposal that's been made by Councilman Azar either way.
Just two amendments, or we could present, we could amend it as presented, and then all...
I've looked at every amendment I've ever tried to do.
That's why we say, as presented. Amy could do that, or we can pause the meeting for two minutes. Pause the meeting for two minutes, and I can...
Can't you consider spreading those air on?
Councilman Nasser, one thing that I reviewed last week's meeting, Councilman Garrison kind of did an example of how this would work. Do you think you can give example of how it would work going from doing the regular roll call vote that we normally do to doing the paper ballot? Could you kind of give an example of how it would work?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the roll call changes at all. I think somebody can, anybody can request a roll call vote. If somebody says, for example, it's real controversial, and a couple of the council people feel like they want to have a paper ballot because they don't want their fellow council people to realize how they're going to vote so it'll influence their vote, then someone can say, "I want a roll call." At that point in time, another council person can request, "I would, I would like to request a ballot vote." At that point in time, the president would say, "It has been requested for a ballot vote. We need a majority of those present to approve that. All those in favor, raise your hand or however you want to do it. And if it doesn't pass, it goes back to a roll call vote."
Okay, thanks for, thanks for the clarification.
And a reason for not just doing ballot votes was?
Well, because I was...
Somebody's convenience?
Yeah, it's more, and, and I didn't want to, my, my thoughts were, I'm not against ballots. I just didn't want every, every time we turn around to have to have a ballot vote. Because it could, I mean, we have a lot of roll call votes, and we could get into a ballot vote, and every time we have a ballot vote, we've got to go over there, fill out the ballots, come over here.
They could, they could be presented by you.
I understand that, and then they got to, they're going to count them, and, you know...
Two minutes.
Whatever, you know, that's, everybody has a right to vote, no. You're not going to hurt my feelings. I don't care one way or the other. So I was just trying to make it so that we didn't eliminate a roll call vote, basically, that we could still have a roll call vote. And you could still have a ballot vote.
Yes, go ahead.
Tonya Garrison, twenty-four oh one North Ninth Street. I'm wondering if one person requests a ballot vote, why do you have to have a majority? It should just be a ballot vote. If one person thinks it should be a ballot, it should be that way. That's what everybody in the audience thinks. I'm just saying it.
Councilman Garrison.
I think we've been together too long because we're starting to think alike. I, I like where this is, I like where it's going, and I hope this is okay to suggest this. I'm just wondering, the way it was before, if somebody, anyone on the council wanted to request a roll call vote, they just yell out, "Roll call vote," and we do that. And I'm wondering how often we all agree on anything, and I'm just wondering, would it be an improvement if, say, I want to say, "Roll call vote," and I yell it out, and we do that? But if I want to do a ballot vote, I just request ballot vote, and we don't have to have a vote to have a ballot vote, we just do that.
So it overrides the, the roll call?
Well, I mean, you don't have to, this is my thought, we can work this out if you want, later or whatever, but I don't think you need to do both, just request it. My, my guess is, we're not going to request a lot of ballot votes, I don't think.
I, okay, I don't, can I...
I mean, I just don't think...
And I'll be honest with you, Michelle and I talked about this, and I really, I don't have a preference either way. I was just trying to, trying to appease every aspect of it, to be totally honest with you. I have no problem with, if you want to eliminate a roll call and make it all ballot, I don't have a problem with that.
Is this two different amendments? Is this two different amendments or one?
No, no, this is one amendment here. But you can, we can strike what we want tonight, if you want. If you want to strike the entire, what is it? Q, you want to strike, well, you can't strike Q, but you can strike the roll call vote. You can strike the entire roll call vote.
If I may, what was originally presented to you is...
I can't get it, my van is down.
Is hiding from me at the moment, but...
The original?
The original, I got it. Q, thank you. Q originally was roll call voting. We changed Q to ballot voting. The original version, you can strike all of the text about ballot voting, and it's not a proper term, but remove, or unstrike, remove the strike for roll call voting.
All right, may I?
Point of information?
Councilwoman Crossen.
When you're talking about the original, are you talking about the one that we were looking at last week?
Yes, the one was filed.
And that did have a provision for ballot voting on it and no provision for roll call or a verbal roll call?
Right, but it shows, it shows the roll call with a strike through.
Right, okay, I just wanted, okay, thank you.
Councilman Azar.
Okay, I have no problem just taking this, and if there's a trash can close, we'll throw it in the trash can. And then what it does basically is eliminates roll call, it eliminates alphabetical order, correct? You don't have to worry about alphabetical order if you're going to ballot. You're going to pass out the ballots, correct? So we don't have to worry about every other month, it's reverse order. So I have no problem with that, if that's what everybody wants, just bring a trash can close.
We recycle, Mr. Councilman Azar.
Are you recycling cans?
I recycle.
I, I...
I'm okay with it.
I kind of like what Councilman Garrison suggested, just preserve both of them at the request of one person. Both of those options.
Might I make a suggestion?
Please.
The council could consider removing all changes to voting, and just tonight, to just start the two meetings.
And then come back with it.
And then we can introduce, with our new procedure, next month, we could have one to make the changes on voting.
Councilwoman Oller.
And I see, you know, where that could help, but I would rather just go ahead and get it all done tonight, and I'm good with, you know, what Councilman Garrison brought up, that either way, we could go one way or the other, whoever made the motion, one motion, and whether they ask for a paper ballot or just a roll call. Ayew.
I agree with that.
We're almost at the finish line. I think we just need to finish it up and move forward. Ayew.
I have one comment. Who overrules? One councilman says, "No, I want a roll call." The other one says, "No, I want a ballot."
Maybe the first, first one to request it.
First one requested.
I just want to make sure so we don't, you know, I'm not very good at fighting.
Well, I get, I guess the question is, can those amendments be made based on what we just discussed? And then just make the motion to...
The motion would be...
Prove, as amended, or...
Someone would make a motion to amend it, to leave the original language for roll call voting in place and adopting the ballot voting as presented.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Morris and seconded by Councilman Nasser.
Question.
Councilman Azar.
What about the reverse order? If you have a roll call, then you're into that situation.
That wasn't in the original.
I know it's not the original, I'm just saying what...
I would suggest that the motion's been made for, just to amend it, if there's a second amendment, we can then amend the roll call process.
And then we can do that later, if you want, or do it tonight?
You can do it tonight, or...
Okay, okay, we're going to amend it to do the...
Go for it, go for it.
Okay, it has been moved by...
We have to amend it now, right?
Yeah, just real quick, we're going to keep Q as both roll, roll call and ballot. We're not going to make an R.
Yeah, the original language stays for roll call.
And we're adding that link, okay, I'm good, I'm good.
That's the amendment.
Just hit.
This is just voting on the amendment.
Correct.
Okay. Then we have to make the, then you make the other amendment.
It has been moved, yes, it has been moved, to amend, to amend special ordinance sixty-five two thousand seventeen by Councilman Morris and seconded by Councilman Nasser. Roll call vote.
Oh, Lord.
Councilwoman Oller. Yes. Councilman Azar.
Just to clarify, you're adding roll call to and ballot, correct? Ballot's on there, you're adding roll call to that.
Yes.
Thank you, yes.
And just to clarify a little bit more, no second is needed for either. Okay. Councilwoman Crossen.
Yes.
Councilman Elliott.
Yes.
You better, you're...
Councilman Garrison.
Yes.
Councilman Morris.
Yes.
Councilman Nasser.
Yes.
Councilman DeBon.
Yes.
That's eight yes.
Okay, the amendment passes. Is, if, you can do it, yeah, okay, okay.
Mr. President, you want to make it?
Go ahead.
Mr. President, I would like to also amend that any time a roll call vote is taken, that you will go to subsection Q if you want to read it, and that's how a roll call will be decided.
The amendment will be adding to subsection Q, after the second sentence, roll call votes that take place during odd numbered months, January, March, May, July, September, November, shall be made in alphabetical order by the city council person's last name. Roll call votes that take place during even numbered months, February, April, June, August, October, and December, shall be made in reverse alphabetical order by the city council person's last name.
That's my amendment.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by Councilman Azar and seconded by Councilwoman Oller that we amend special ordinance sixty-five as amended. All of, I'm sorry. Could we get a roll call vote, please, Michelle?
Councilwoman Oller.
Yes.
Councilman Azar.
Yes.
Councilwoman Crossen.
Yes.
Councilman Elliott.
No.
Councilman Garrison.
I changed my vote for yes.
Yes.
Councilman Garrison?
Yes, again.
Councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman Nasser?
Yes.
Councilman DeBon?
Yes.
That's eight yes.
Okay, as long as there are no further amendments to that, that special ordinance sixty-five as amended, as amended.
As amended.
No?
Now we got to vote on it.
We got to vote on it. Mr. President?
Councilwoman Crossen.
I move the approval of special ordinance sixty-five as amended, as amended.
Second. Okay, it has been moved by Councilwoman Crossen and seconded by Councilman Nasser that we approve special ordinance sixty-five as amended, as amended. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes. Next item, please, Michelle.
Aren't you glad, Mr. President?
Before we move on, Mr. President, would you mind addressing those changes?
Oh, absolutely. With, with that having passed, every sunshine meeting that has been scheduled for 2018 is now considered a regular meeting.
Just from this point forward.
From this point forward, yes, that's right. And having said that, if we could get to the next item, please.
Special ordinance sixty-six two thousand seventeen, many city council rules.
A positioner?
This is Councilman Nation's proposed amendment, and he's not here, so I feel a little odd speaking for him. He wanted to, just because he's not here to clarify, he wanted to remove letter O under section four motions that says, "Resolutions or ordinances calling for declarations of policy by the council on public controversies unrelated or not germane to the powers of the council shall not be in order."
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on special ordinance sixty-six two thousand seventeen? Name and address, please.
Donald Hyde, fourteen eleven Papa Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. This is one of the reasons why I come to this meetings, and I'm tired of being the devil's advocate, but you guys don't make it easy. I've heard all the discussion, I understood most of it, and now what you've brought up, I've got a clue what he's talking about. Could you guys explain to the public at large more definitely what he's talking about?
Thank you.
Michelle or Eddie, would either of you like to address that?
Didn't he say that what he thought, his perception of that, is what may be controversial to you is not controversial to me, and he just wanted to eliminate that wording? Is that right?
Generally, when you're reading this section, it has to do with what is, what matters that would affect, or this council may affect, those are the items that this council should be considering. So something that, that this council either does not have any power or control over, or any direct relationship with, generally would not be allowed for consideration before the council.
For a resolution.
The way it's currently, the way it's currently written. What this change would, would call, could open the possibility, then, this council could make statements about anything. A war in Europe, whatever it may be, just using that as an example, that wouldn't normally be germane to this council, you would then be able to make some declaration in this public setting.
Any other members of the public like to speak on this ordinance? Counsel.
I can see.
Councilman Azar.
This is something that I had put in, had asked to be put in the rules many, many, many years ago, because I didn't feel like the council should be put into a position that we really have no control, no say-so over, that is a public controversy that we may vote on, that maybe the majority of the citizens of Terre Haute are against or for, and we don't know that, and we're voting on something that really is not in our purview that we have no control. And that's the reason that, that I had put that in the rules. I did that at the suggestion of a, a longtime county councilman that had it in their rules, and he had suggested that, and I thought it was a good idea at the time, and that's why it's, it's been in there. I don't remember how long ago it was, but I understand Mr. Nation's objection and whoever else objects to it, but I just felt like it would put us, at some point in time, in a position where we don't need to be in.
Mr. President, I just wanted to let everyone know, if the council decided to table this, you could either have it at next week's meeting on the eighteenth, or you could have it at the first regular meeting in February, which would be February first.
Thank you.
Councilman Garrison.
I'm just wondering, you know, some of these things that have come up once in a while, not, not very often, but it's usually an uncomfortable situation, I think, for everybody to vote on, but I'm wondering if the council person wanted to make a statement... to vote on, but I'm wondering if the councilperson wanted to make a statement about whatever they wanted to do on their own and not take it to a vote, is there a place on our agenda where they could make a statement? Could they do it in government report, or communications, or something like that?
Let me pull up the new rules.
At least that would give a councilperson an avenue to talk about something without actually having everybody take a side.
Oh, it was in the first one. It was in Special Ordinance 64. We have reports from city officials, reports from standing committees, non-standing committees, which-
What about comment on non-agenda items? Can the city council use that also if they wanna take a three-minute platform?
I don't know that a member would be out of line by making some form of a statement. Obviously, when we open up our meetings for public comment, generally, the only thing that's, that would not be fair game would be an agenda item. And that would go the same for when we have reports from the administration or anyone else, and I think that, at the very least, an individual member could ask for permission from the president to address the council as a whole. And I don't think that that would be out of line whatsoever.
There's an option, I just wanted to throw that out.
Councilman Nasser?
Councilman Azar, I understand that, you know, in the past, that we've had that language in there for, you know, whatever reason, you know, the people that wanna get involved in controversial items, but I think the times have changed where there's businesses and other entities that are looking at what communities feel on a particular subject. You know, there's been All-Star Games, different events that have been pulled out of cities because of the way they view different items, so I think that, you know, I'm gonna support this if it does come before a vote, because I think there's people that are looking at the outside end on how us as a community feels about different items. Ayo.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Crossen? I tend to agree with the position that Councilman Nasser has put forward as well, but I also feel a little uncomfortable, excuse me, since Councilman Nation could not be with us tonight, acting on this, since we do have some questions about his concerns, I would prefer that we take action on it when he is here to answer the questions that people have about his concerns. He did speak briefly to it at the last meeting, but I think some of the concerns that were raised tonight didn't come up then, and so I would, after people are through commenting on it, I would move that we table this either until our next meeting or until the 18th, and I think Councilman Nation would probably be comfortable with that. Ayo. I didn't know it was moot again, but I'm happy to do that, I thought some more of you might have comments.
Okay, did you make that motion?
I so moved.
Okay. Second, okay. It has been moved by Councilwoman Crossen, seconded by Councilman Nasser, that we table this, and- Don had seconded first. Thirty days? Next month? Next month? So-
And just a reminder, it does, council rules require two-thirds to pass any amendments. We were just confirming that.
Would you mind repeating that, Michelle?
We were confirming the council rules state that it requires two-thirds to pass amendments to the council rules.
But it's no effect on that?
Okay. No, it doesn't. I'm just, if we're going to be short members next week.
Well, yeah. My only concern, I guess, is Councilman Nation if he's here next week, but I guess we could table it again if he isn't, so I would say let's table it till next week.
Are you saying the rules take effect next week, at the 18th? The new rule? I would think it would take effect at a regular meeting, not at the next meeting.
You wouldn't vote on it at the next meeting?
No, what you're saying, once it's signed, it takes place right now.
It takes effect immediately. It's a, you can take action at your next meeting.
Okay. Even though it's a special meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Would you like me to restate my motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. Just to restate it, my motion was that we table this until the special meeting on January 18th. So I'd-
Second. It has been moved by Councilwoman Crossen and seconded by Councilman Garrison that we table Special Ordinance 66-2017 until our meeting on the 18th. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes. It's tabled, I apologize, it's tabled.
Just to clarify for our new president, we had no new business filed.
Our next item, please.
Oh, I was ahead of myself, wasn't I? Special Ordinance 67-2017, amending Special Ordinance 41-2017, the 2018 wastewater salary ordinance.
Assistantor?
Counsel, Eddie Felling, City Attorney. Just briefly, I apologize, I would like to thank the council, I have some DePaul University pre-law students here, this is their first experience with a city council meeting, so thank you for keeping it entertaining.
They all resigned.
I told them they were in for a treat, and you never know if you're gonna get it at council meetings, so thank you for that. Going back to the special ordinance here again, to reiterate, this would be the 3% change in the salary ordinance with regard to the wastewater union employees. There are two additional pieces that I promised you last week that were in your packet, and I apologize due to a miscommunication, I got that out to Councilman Elliott, I did not get it to the rest of you prior to the meeting. I would note, I hope they're fairly upfront and self-explanatory. The first schedule you have, the key column I'm concerned about this is entitled to the Terre Haute Wastewater Plant Compensation Analysis. The far-right column indicates what a 3% increase would be for each one of the classification of employees over there. The bottom-right number indicates approximately $80,000 is, it would be the total annual cost with regard to the salary. The second page that was passed out was put together by our new director, Debbie Paget, I wanna thank her for doing this. What she has done over the past months is to go through pieces of equipment that we have over at the plant, she's found items that we can do without, and thankfully, we have discontinued leasing those, I believe that's already taken effect. Debbie?
Yes?
That's already been done, correct? And we've also moved, and I believe it's already in the works, we have already purchased several items. Key numbers you see here down in the middle, how the annual savings we're going to have. The total yearly savings equate to over $74,000, so I did note last week that we were in the 75% range, now, if Councilman Elliott can back up my quick math, maybe we're around 92, 93% coverage. And the very important thing with the moves that Ms. Paget's made over at the plant is that this is not just a one-time deal, it's not just a one-year savings, this will continue to be a savings for the city throughout the life of the equipment that we've purchased. So what this does is, is really creates almost a complete wash with regard to what would happen within the wastewater budget. To emphasize, just a couple last things quickly before I answer any questions you may have, as a reminder from last week, wastewater employees are one of the only employees that are treated differently from, with respect only to how they are paid. Almost all employees are paid out of the general fund, which are primarily property tax dollar-based, wastewater employees are paid out of a revenue-based amounts that are brought in through our utility itself. So there is a big difference there on how that money is allocated. Again, we've worked on it for a long time, we are bringing this before the council for approval, prior to taking the contract for vote before the sanitary commission, we wanted to make sure we didn't end up in a position, quite frankly, that wouldn't be good for either party, if the council would not approve this, and to be able to facilitate any questions without, hopefully, the council feeling forced like to have to make a decision with a contract already having been in place. That being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions with regard to this proposal.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak on Special Ordinance 67-2017? Name and address for the record, please.
Donald Hyde, 1411 Papa Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. I'll be quick on this one. I approve. I say that because of what they do. Everybody likes drinking clean and safe water. It's part of a team effort, and wastewater is one of those jobs most people would not do, even if you wanted to do it. Have a hard time keeping employees, and above all, they have a hard time keeping employees that do the job right. I like drinking clean water, so I approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counsel?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Oller?
There's no further questions. I move, we can call for discussion.
Councilman Elliott, were you wanting to call for discussion?
I thought I had.
I apologize, Councilwoman Oller.
I'm just gonna move to approve Special Ordinance 67-2017 as presented.
Somebody second, then we can have a discussion. Here you go.
Discussion. My turn?
Yes.
Thank you. Attorney Felling, raise your right hand.
I've done that a couple times, it's all right.
I don't have to witness stand or the podium sometimes, so I just wanna make sure we're okay here, for the youngsters in the crowd. You know, we got this lease schedule, when were these leases entered into?
They're all different times, I know it's not indicated on the sheet that you have, some of those date back as far as, I believe, the late 90s even, if I'm not mistaken.
To when?
Even the late, some of them date back to the late 90s.
So I guess my question would be, for how many months have we wasted $6,209 by having these?
That is a valid question.
Very question, isn't it? Yeah.
And I would commend-
All we hear is, well, we've cut everything, we've cut everything, and now, all of a sudden, we find out we've been leasing a bunch of equipment that, you know, we're gonna buy it, and we're gonna own it. Is there much of a difference between who pays property taxes and who pays sewer rate fees? Are they the same people? I pay both.
Are you asking me that question?
Yeah.
Or is it rhetorical?
Well, you made a statement that it's different, but I don't think it is, because it's the same group of people, they either pay taxes or they pay fees, and you have to pay both.
Just to clarify, when I make that statement, I, what I'm focusing on is the state of those, the state of the wastewater utility itself and the state of our general fund, which is property tax dollar-based.
But it's the same people that pay it.
Citizens of our community, yes.
Were these leases, month-to-month leases?
I don't know, I can defer, obviously, I'm not familiar with the day-to-day operations at the plant.
Okay. Did we, were the pieces of equipment we purchased the same ones we had been leasing? Same, exact same equipment?
I believe it would, I don't know if it would be exactly the same, but to perform the same function, yes. So, for example, if it's a forklift, I don't know if it was a crown forklift or-
The same forklift that we had been leasing?
That's a, no, I do, my understatement is not-
So the leased equipment went back and new equipment was purchased, in all these cases? Okay. I passed out last week the State Board of Accounts audit and asked you to look at footnote nine, dealing with the administration's response to the cash flow challenges and cash challenges. Did anybody see anything in there about pay increases as being a way to solve our cash problem? I mean, I didn't find it, asked you all to look for it, I doubt that you did either. Gonna remind you quickly, we did have a bond downgrade in 2017, and we'll see what happens going forward. I passed out today the city financial plan, the one page of it that we got back sometime in 2016. I direct your attention to footnote five on the bottom right-hand corner, where for the general fund, it reads, "Personnel expense has been increased by 2% per year to reflect changes in health care and pension expenditures." Don't see any mention of pay increases there for anybody that's covered by the general fund. Don't recall pay increases being discussed when, last fall, when we needed to deal with wastewater utility rate increases, that was all about satisfying the bond agreements that we had and providing the cash flow for $42 million of bonds for phase two of the long-term control plan, and of course, we ultimately learned that $42 million wasn't close to, you know, what it was gonna be. You know, if I ask myself the question, do pay increases cause increases or decreases in cash balances, I always get the same answer, decreases. It's money going out. I believe if we approve one pay increase, we're gonna see a lot more requests, you know, coming down the road, I think it's only natural. Our cash flow challenges are still there, and we have these borrowing discussions all the time, y'all don't like it, shouldn't run the city on credit cards, shouldn't have short-term borrowings. I'm prepared to take a firm stand on this, and, oh no, are you?
Councilman Nasser?
Eddie, can you tell me what would be the ramifications if we voted this down?
I cannot tell you for sure what would occur. One of the reasons why we're doing this order is to keep us out of a breach of contract situation.
So what would happen if we were in breach of contract?
Obviously, well, presumably, there would be a lawsuit filed, because the contract would have been entered into already, and if the city would not fulfill their end of the obligation, we could be liable, obviously, for what we agreed to, and cost some penalties on top of that. Hopefully, that, I mean, obviously, that won't be the case, the way that we presented to the council, if this would not be passed, obviously, we're in a bad position from the standpoint that we would either have to go ahead and proceed with the contract itself, that still has the increase in it, and attempt to find an amicable way to solve that, or option B, the union could allege that we've essentially reneged on a good-faith negotiation, and it could cause some litigation issues there as well.
And just to confirm, there's already been agreement with the administration and the union, correct?
Yes, we've got a tentative agreement, just to clarify, again, that has to go through the sanitary commission.
Okay, so there's already an agreement in place, correct, with the administration and the union?
Yes.
Okay. So if this council voted it down, we'd be, the city would be in violation of that agreement, correct?
Again, it's not a binding contract from the standpoint that it's been executed, but yes, we would be in a poor position, I will say that.
And we would face potential lawsuit, correct?
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Crossen?
Eddie, I just wanna make sure I understand the process. If I'm recalling correctly, this is, other agreements have not come before us for approval.
No, they would not.
They would not?
And normally, they would, and again, the agreement's not coming before this council for approval.
Right. That's my next question. So the sanitary board could still approve this agreement, even if we voted against it?
They could approve it or deny it either way.
Right, they could do that.
Absolutely.
Independent of our vote here tonight.
Yes, that's very true.
So what is the force of our vote here tonight? Yea or nay?
Well, it's, whether or not, if, letting the sanitary commission know that we're going to be able to meet our obligations if they do execute the contract that's already been negotiated. There's always a concern, and I would be concerned if I was on a commissioner or board, being asked to approve a contract and not knowing for sure that we could meet the obligations in terms of that contract, and that's why we're here tonight. So by voting in favor of this, it allows the process to continue, now we move on to the next step, where it still is ultimately the decision of the sanitary commission, again, to execute or to not.
I guess my question is, why are we, is it required that we take a vote on this?
You will be required, no matter what, to take a vote on this, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ayo?
Councilman Morris?
Were we required because of the contract?
Again, I'm just trying to make sure I understand the process. So just if, if one of the other organizing unions, organized unions, had come, had come, if their agreement with the city had included a pay raise, that would have come before us too?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand the process. Thank you. I yield.
One last note, if I may. We anticipate, as a lot of these will be expiring in this year, we will start negotiating again here in a matter of probably five months or so. We hope, and we always have a goal of having contracts completed, passed by the respective boards in a perfect world prior to budget time, so that these matters can be addressed at that juncture. Realistically, the way scheduling works and with the number of collective bargaining units that we have, it's not always, not always a possibility. So I will do everything in my power to avoid being in a situation where we're doing this in January and hopefully have the discussion during budget time. But again, please bear with me if we end up in a situation like this.
Well, we obviously have no control when these issues get to us. If anybody would have asked me what my position was, it would have been pretty, I would have made it pretty clear at that point in time. So, and I didn't know anything about this till, you know, it appeared on New Business last month, which was, again, well after, well after budget time. So this is all really awkward and totally unfair to this council.
Councilman Azar?
And I might add to the employee of the wastewater as well.
I yield. Councilman Garrison?
Just one thing that just occurred to me with some of this conversation. I think about a year ago, Mark Thompson had came here before us and stood where you stood, and he asked his council what he could do or what they could do to, to get a raise for their employees. And I think I said something like, show some sort of a savings on the operation, what they do. And we didn't ask for this, but we are seeing the savings here of the $74,000, which is pretty close to the $80,000 in the raise that, you know, I just, I just thought of, wanted to bring that to light. Originally, I'd hoped that all raises, and I think I said this during budget time, that we wouldn't have any raises this year and that we would wait and make sure we had the new revenue stream in place. That didn't, that didn't happen. It was out of our control. But I know you guys have been working on this, I think you said a year and a half. So anyway, I wanted to bring all that up.
I yield. Councilwoman Oller?
I just kind of wanted to add a little note to that. I know Debbie Paget down there has had a lot handed to her, and I'd like to thank her for going through and, and looking at the books and cutting and figuring out what cuts can be done down there to help.
I yield.
I just have one more question, and I think, Eddie, you told us this last week, and I just don't remember clearly your answer. When was the last time these folks had a raise?
The wastewater employees would have had a raise, I believe, in 2016.
Okay, so that would be sooner than most other city employees? I mean, more recently?
Yes. And you got to, you have to keep in mind that a lot of those contracts are three, three years plus or minus. So something that may have negotiated for an increase in, excuse me, I think it was 15, may have been negotiated for back in, really, 2011. Just something to keep in mind.
Okay, thank you.
I yield. All a question? Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Oller?
Yes.
Councilman Azar?
Yes.
Councilwoman Crossen?
No.
Councilman Elliott?
No.
Councilman Garrison?
Yes.
Councilman Morris?
Yes.
Councilman Azar?
Yes.
Councilman DeBonne?
Yes.
That's six yes, two no.
Passes.
Thank you, counsel.
New business, so... As we, we have no new business.
In that case, I move to adjourn.
Second.
It has been moved to adjourn by Councilman Azar and seconded by Councilwoman Oller. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting's adjourned.